So I was on YouTube, no, I was on Facebook. I never go on Facebook, but my wife goes on Facebook. In this case, someone else went on Facebook. I have no idea who it was, but I was on.
July 25th, 2016, Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. It's 5 o'clock, 5:02. For those who wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please use the sign-up sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You will be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment, will be taken at that time. Call to order, please Kathy Steer. I'm sorry, roll call, please Kathy Steer.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
All right. Comments from citizens present. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the agency's attention any item not listed on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others. As a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of this agenda item, an agency member can discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The chair has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before the agency this evening? Okay, thank you. And there are no minutes on this agenda. The next item on the agenda is election of the Urban Renewal Vice Chair. The Vice Chair of the Agency shall be elected annually by the agency from among the agency members at the first regular meeting of the agency each year, and shall hold the office for one year until, or until their successors are elected. This is on the agenda due to the fact that Counselor Roger Sprague has resigned from council, and so we need to fill this position from now until December 31st, or when the next one is elected. So I will open nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I nominate Dick Anderson.
Second.
A motion and a second to nominate Dick Anderson. Any other nominations? Okay, I'll accept a motion and a second to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nominations are closed. I will accept a motion and a second to elect Dick Anderson as Vice Chair.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to elect Dick Anderson as Vice Chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have staff present the remaining special orders of business. Allison Robertson.
Good evening, Chair Walkie and agency members. Tonight, the first thing on the agenda is the annual grant report, which is a presentation by Dave Price. He's the Director of the Small Business Development Center. And they are in their third year of receiving this grant, and it's through one of the economic development tools that you all made available to assist those in the Urban Renewal District. And just to let you know, we've had a total of four grants come through this program in the last three years. And the total funds approximately that have been used over those three years, about $44,000. Let's see. Yes. I'm hearing your voice out there.
Yeah, we're not hearing it back here either.
A little closer. Hello? Is that better? Okay. Is that better? Okay, thanks. Wait a minute. Oh, who's calling this? Thanks Charlie. Thank you Charlie. Okay, so Dave is here to give a quick report on the fiscal year 2015-16 grant program. And I'll let him do his presentation and come right back. Welcome, Mr. Price.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Chair Walkie, thank you very much. Mayor Williams and members of the agency. I do thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of Oregon Coast Community College and the Small Business Development Center, let me thank you for that support as well as the grant program you just heard about, the $44,000 that you've spent, invested, I'd like to say, in the last three years, including the portions that were allocated to the SBDC. So for anyone watching at home and maybe unfamiliar, just a very brief introduction to the center. The Small Business Development Center is a service of Oregon Coast Community College, and it's based here at the college's Lincoln City Center. We're on High School Drive between the movie theaters and the high school Boris Field. Invite you to stop by. At the SBDC, we work to build wealth and joy among Lincoln City and Lincoln County's business owners. We help start, grow, and retain profitable businesses in Lincoln County. That is our charter. We're supported by a thriving network of 20 SBDCs across the state. We're led by Director Mark Gregory, and our network helps us deliver services that we might not otherwise be able to deliver, whether that is export assistance for a Lincoln City business looking to send their products abroad, or a capital access team that can step in and help a business that's looking for, looking to expand and looking at different options in terms of finding the capital to do so, to do so in a broader way than might be available right here. We're also supported in part by the Small Business Administration and Business Oregon, as well as, of course, partners like yourselves and the host institution, Oregon Coast Community College. So at the center, we offer free, pardon me, free confidential one-on-one business advising to anyone who asks for it. And that is anyone at all. It doesn't have to be a business owner. In most cases, it is, but it can be anyone who's just considering starting a business. And more importantly, after that first meeting, you continue to have the opportunity to meet absolutely free, absolutely confidential, one-on-one with a business advisor anytime, over and over and over again, so long as you're making progress and the action items that you leave a counseling session with, if you're making progress on that, we're happy to continue helping you work that football down the field and work with you until you've reached your goals. So it's not a one-time shot. In addition to that advising, however, we do deliver a great deal of business instruction via classes and workshops. We'll talk in a minute about our Small Business Management Program, which is a robust, year-long program. But it also involves all sorts of classes that may happen just once, like in September, because there's some weird things happening out there in the Lincoln City business community. If you're a small business owner, you're reading headlines for months now about minimum wage increases, about mandatory sick leave, about mandatory retirement savings, and now, if you run a restaurant or a hotel with a restaurant, heaven forbid, you don't know what's happening in the Ninth Circuit Courts with tip pooling regulations changing. And so we thought, if ever there was a good time to bring BOLI to town, and if not the people who actually write the laws, the people who will enforce the laws, to hear from the horse's mouth, we've invited Jennifer Jermundson from their TAC team, and she's going to come down and speak in Lincoln City to anyone who wants to come. It's going to be in September, and that's just one example of a class. We have to charge $35 for that because it's costing us $1,200 to bring her. It's not cheap, but we think it's going to be a great session, and we think that, I hope, that small business owners throughout the city will be able to maybe rest a little easier the evening of the 28th of September after they've heard from her and had all of their questions answered. So just one example of the kinds of workshops and programs that this program itself helps fund for businesses located within the Lincoln City Urban Renewal District. So the vast majority of the grant that I'm reporting on tonight, of the funds that we've invested in scholarships at the SBDC, 93% of them actually, were spent in the Small Business Management Program. This is the highest test fuel that we have for the engines of the local Lincoln City business community. It is a year-long program. I'm a graduate of it. I took the program back when I owned a business and we were in the throes of a bit of a recession, you might remember. And I took the class, I took the program, I should say, just not maybe six years after I graduated from OSU with my MBA, and I found that this program is exactly what Ron Spieso, the former SBM Coordinator at the SBDC, always called it, like a mini version of an MBA. I found it was much more than that, actually. It's really where the rubber meets the road kind of thing. It's a lot less theory and a lot more practice. And it is, it's an intense year. A student in the SBM program, including the 15 people who participated courtesy of this grant this year, the 15 business owners, they attend class once a month, and then they also attend a one-on-one counseling session during that month to help them digest what they've learned and help them talk about ways to apply that to their business. Or if they have other pressing needs, we'll shift and talk about exactly what they need to work on in their advising session. So I mentioned your grant helped as many as 15 people in Lincoln City participate in that program alone this year. At our graduation ceremony we held in June, we heard from many of those SBM participants, and I almost gave you a PowerPoint with a bunch of quotes, but I've just distilled it down to three. One of them said, "The curriculum was great, and the monthly meetings helped me go in the right direction." She said, "Misty's always pushed me in the right direction to meet my goals." That is Misty Lambrecht. She's talking about our coordinator of the SBM program. "The interaction with other small business owners is priceless." Another wrote, "Banking class was excellent. Business law class was outstanding, and the accounting class was very informative. The one-on-one with Misty has been invaluable, critical, key, vital, and necessary to the success of my business." I'm not going to quibble with redundancies. I love that sentence. And finally, another SBM student said simply, "I always came away with action items from my one-on-one sessions." So back in August 2015, 11 months ago, we applied for and secured total grant support of $19,800 through this Economic Development Grant Program. However, we have left, I have left 34% of that on the table. I love to spend money, and I'm not thrilled that I left it there. It's about $7,000. The reasons are many, but suffice to say that we applied for two different grants, one primarily for funding the SBM program and another funding our much more affordable classes. We spent about $1,000, just under $1,000, towards those other classes. But those classes, at $35 apiece, they add up. A lot of people can participate, and it didn't amount to the numbers we really wanted it to. And I think that's for a number of reasons. I'd be happy to go into if you want to in Q and A. I don't want to eat too much of the clock, but we've learned some lessons, and I think that I need to do a better job of outreach. If we are successful, and we intend to apply for this grant again, by the way, spoiler alert, in August, and if we're fortunate enough to win it, we will do our best to find new ways to promote it. And I know for a fact that we have absolutely retooled the fall and winter lineup of classes and workshops. This BOLI is just an example. There's not a class coming back that is the same as it was for the last couple of years, much less last term. And so we're bringing a lot of new things to the table, and I think that we're going to engage a number of Lincoln City businesses in ways that we haven't been able to in the past. Also, for the record, I've reached out. Gretchen Ammerman is in the building. She is the new editor of the NewsGuard, and I've already requested a meeting with her to talk about ways that we might be more innovative in how we educate Lincoln City businesses, in particular, the fact that this grant is out there. Sometimes if it comes from me in an email or a radio broadcast or something, somehow I'm coming across as kind of a charmy salesman. There's something, "What am I, what am I really after?" I'm like, "I'm not after anything." I'm letting you know that this program won't necessarily cost you anything. We have a number of ways that we ask people to put skin in the game so that they're not getting something, a free ride, if you will. But even talking about any kind of support, I'm having a hard time being understood that I'm not out to, I'm not out to sell them. And so we're working on that. It's not a new problem, but it's something I think the NewsGuard can help us with. And we will continue working on behalf of Lincoln City's businesses, as well as those in Otis and Depot Bay and Rose Lodge and beyond, moving forward. The help that you and this grant have provided in helping 22 businesses over the past year alone has been tremendous. You've helped each of them improve their bottom line performance and sharpening their own skills and expertise, and we do appreciate that. And for the record, I also absolutely appreciate all the help from Director Robertson and from Kurt Olson as well, for his time here. And with that, I'd be happy to field any questions you might have.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Nigel?
Mr. Price, do you see class size growing? Is participation increasing at all?
It depends on the class. Today, we had a lunch and learn class. We had Ed Dreistat, actually, out to talk about tourism and marketing and such. It's a SBDC workshop, and maybe six people were there. But in other classes, we had our largest ever Small Business Management cohort. We started with 30. I think we wound up graduating 24. It's a higher loss rate. We bled off more students than I'd wished, but it just happens if you miss more than two classes, you have to make something up, or you have to, because if you're not committing to the program, we don't feel it's fair to everyone else in your cohort. And so we did lose some to attrition, and it's not always their fault. It's not they blew it off. Things got changed at work and they got busy, and so we're happy to work with them and welcome them back in the future. But on balance, I think absolutely, we, I don't see attendance dropping for anything, and we're all, we're about trying to find the classes that will help attract people. And if I may, one other point on this. To answer that question, we conducted a study for almost seven months. We had in various ways, e-newsletters, website, Facebook, and the newspaper, a survey that we posted, asking people, "What business instruction would they like?" We're not offering sales strategy. Should we? Should we be helping retail display, you know, that kind of thing? And we took what the findings were, and I'm actually meeting with my advisory committee tomorrow to talk about them, but they helped design our upcoming term, including a new class on conflict resolution. That's one thing the survey told me. Hadn't thought of that. We hadn't offered that in years. And so John Baker from Newport is going to teach that for us. But no, because of those steps and just the fact that we do market in every way we can, although our budget doesn't allow for much paid advertising, as I'm sure Gretchen will tell us from the NewsGuard, the, we're continuing to see higher numbers than historically. It's a long way of saying, Chester, I think we're doing okay with attendance, but we're always working on it.
And do you have another source of funding other than urban renewal grants?
A number, yes. There's a relatively long list. There's the, we are funded with roughly $30,000 every year from the Small Business Administration, another 40 from Business Oregon and the Legislature, another 30 to 40, more or less matching funds for the SBA from the college, the Oregon Coast Community College General Fund, and then there was the Community Development Block Grant. Mayor Williams had to sit through a report very similar to this about that grant. That grant, we spent, we were able to invest like $42,000 in scholarships, and also of that, about $15,000 in a youth entrepreneurship program last year alone in Depot Bay orchestrated by Toby Nguyen. That is a, that is a grant that we relied on for many years. It helps us to serve microenterprises. Means you have to have five or fewer employees, and it means you have to qualify as low or moderate income to be eligible. And that's just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the strings attached to those dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Price, I appreciated your numbers in your write-up. Could you help me, I think you pointed to 20 individuals or businesses participated in programs that were, in essence, partially funded by this grant, and 15 of those were the Small Business Management Program.
Right.
What are the other five, out of curiosity, that are, because you went on later and talked about additional individuals in businesses doing one-on-one type of classes or individual classes?
Many of them, of course, we saw in the advising world, which won't appear here because that's not charged, but they took classes like QuickBooks, five-part series, QuickBooks Payroll, Advanced QuickBooks, Online QuickBooks, Shoebox Bookkeeping, and Google Advanced Social Media Marketing, and Advanced Facebook and Twitter.
Perhaps, Madam Chair, when you come in August, because you've already set us up for, you know, an ask, would you mind bringing some history perhaps, other than yourself, and I know there are some other graduates out there, I think at this point where we've spent three years or so with grants, you know, what are some of the past graduates doing so that we know that our dollars have stayed invested in the community?
Okay.
Would be just a nice, nice touch.
I'd be happy to.
And then the other, Madam Chair, I'd be curious if other communities are assisting in your efforts, and if so, in what ways that we might think of supporting business in a different way, though this certainly is a good one.
I could touch on that very briefly. For the record, this began when the Community Development Block Grant first became an important piece of the SBA package, back when it was $100,000 and fewer strings and all that, maybe 10 years ago. But the cities of Walport to the tune of $500, the cities of Lincoln City to the tune of $5,000, and Newport to the tune of $7,500, and the county at $30,000 a year, all contributed. So that's a total of $43,000 in local support funding that has been an important part of our budget ever since. It came about because it was specifically tied to taking our half-time Small Business Management Coordinator position. This predates me, but I'm quite sure that this is accurate. And it allowed us to move that position to full-time. Now, those numbers haven't changed since that period of time, but it's still vital in that role. Now, last year, Lincoln City didn't make a $5,000 payment. We didn't submit an invoice for it because the Urban Renewal Program was cooking along, and it's just a very awkward thing to say, "Well, that pile of money is different than this bucket of money," and so we chose not to have that conversation. But Newport continues to contribute $7,500 just with, for anything. So that goes to personnel, or overhead, or whatever bills need to be paid, generally around that Small Business Management Coordinator position, as does the county's support, and even Walports. And I don't want to belittle, Walport's $500. I think it's marvelous that they're contributing. I was just at their Chamber of Commerce meeting at the Fresh Mexican last Thursday, and there's a lot happening, and we're happy to play a supportive role. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, maybe I have.
Yes, Mr. Ward?
I'm Mr. Price. Before you were a government worker, you were a pretty successful businessperson. You, you know, you knew how to do profit and losses, income statements, cash flow statements, and how to market, and at the end, how to market your business when you were ready to sell it and make a profit. I know you guys aren't running a business school now, but you do have business classes and lots of them. How well, using your knowledge base, how well would you say your graduating students measure up?
It's not false modesty to say that a number of them are head and shoulders above where I was in the ability to run a business. And, you know, part of that may be that I was late in finding the SBDC, and I was. I missed it for the first decade I was here, and I don't have any excuse for that. I just was focused on getting a job done, and I didn't look at the resources that were available to me, or for that matter, for my advertisers. But, so yeah, I think you'd be stunned at what some of our businesses are doing. There's just an absolute exciting group of people out there doing, taking risks, like financial risks, like I know you would all appreciate as entrepreneurs and business people, that are doing big things in Lincoln City right now. And it's exciting, and it's energizing. And so no, there's plenty of very capable people out there doing some really cool things.
So that was my next question, actually, is are they staying in Lincoln City? Why don't you give them the tools and the ignite? Are they staying in Lincoln City? Are they going to Portland or Salem?
It's a tricky one to measure, but it'd be easy to say, for example, if I'm coming back with a couple of Small Business Management graduates, as Mr. Anderson has suggested, I could come back with the years that have taken place in this grant program in the last three years, and I surely hope that the 15 people who just graduated in June are still here. But it might be a little more illustrative to look at the last two years and maybe some before then. My gut tells me they're here. You know, there are certain examples. People had to leave the area, family business or family emergencies or what have you. But no, I think you'd be pleased. I'll see if I can cobble those numbers together before next month, if I'm able to get on that agenda. Thank you.
I guess I want to state that I'm a Small Business Management graduate, and I'm still here.
Hey, good, all right. It's one in our column.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
For your part. Now we have an issue with the other price in the room.
Okay, so next on your agenda should be the staff report, which is about requesting a time extension to the Amendment Number Four to the D-Lake School Lease, which we have with the Lincoln City Cultural Center. And earlier this year, the agency received the annual report from the Lincoln City Cultural Center. This report is a requirement of the rent waiver for their lease of the agency-owned D-Lake School building. Staff submitted a staff report at the May 9th meeting, addressing the history of the relationship between the agency and the Lincoln City Cultural Center. Since the original lease effective in 2006, there have been several amendments. At the agency work session on July 11th, discussion included the idea of creating a new lease to incorporate the amendments and make the document easier to comprehend. The Fourth Amendment to the lease of the D-Lake School is for capital grant funds by the agency and for grounds maintenance, and that amendment expires August 14th of this year. So in order to have more time for revision to the lease in its entirety, which would include the Fourth Amendment, staff is requesting the agency consider the presented Sixth Amendment, which extends capital grant funds and grounds maintenance for four and a half months until December 31st of 2016. Do you have any questions about that?
Questions? I believe the resolution, no. No. I would entertain a motion to approve this amendment.
A move to approve Amendment Six.
Madam Chair.
It's Mr. Ward.
I have to declare a potential conflict of interest. I guess I've been a miss since I have interest in an event center. Just have an abundance of caution.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
All right. It's moved, been moved and seconded to approve the Amendment Number Six to the agreement for lease of D-Lake School between the Urban Renewal Agency and the Cultural Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 27 Years of Urban Renewal Report.
Yes, so this is the document. It's getting rather thick. This report discusses all urban renewal projects completed since 1988, when the district was formed. The document was first released in June of 2009 at the agency's 20-year anniversary, and updates are generally made every couple of years or so. In your packets, I had a little trouble uploading the entire document, so I only put the pages that were updated in the staff report. But you can find this online, or if you'd like a hard copy, you're welcome to let me know or stop by the office. I'll try to get some printed this week. The changes made in terms of projects that were added were the second phase of the Southwest 35th Street parking lot in the Nelscott District, the North 22nd Street intersection, which was ADA improvements, that was a public works project using urban renewal funding, the Northwest Jetty sanitary sewer line upgrade, also a public works partnership project using urban renewal money, the Rhodes End South lift station upgrade, also, again, public works partnership project. We also have the Lincoln City Business Gap Analysis, which was We also have the Lincoln City Business Gap Analysis, which was one of our studies. And then, the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan Update was the last project page to be added to this book. So, again, I'll have this uploaded sometime this week to the website. And again, if you would like a hard copy, feel free to let me know and I'll get one to you. Are there any copy questions on this?
Madam Chair, these, these samples that you just went through, Allison, were projects that did not make it into the report? Is that what you said?
Those are projects, those are the new projects that have been added to this twenty-seven year report.
Have been added.
So, were brought up to being current with all the projects that have been completed.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I found two tiny little hi-bos.
I would love to hear where they are.
Okay. Would you like me to tell you now or just give you?
If they're tiny and you don't mind now?
On page two dash twenty-three.
Uh-huh.
I think halfway down, it says this update to the existing infrastructure was addressing. I think it should be addressed.
Okay.
And then, on page seven dash twenty-one, end of the first paragraph, I think there should be a was after Lincoln City. The need for reliable analysis of business in Lincoln City was needed to make strategic.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Our next item on the agenda is bank signers for their renewal account.
Yeah. So, this is just a, a simple housekeeping action. The Urban Renewal Agency's loan program funds are in an account with Bank of the West and it's time to update the staff associated with the account for the bank's signature card. So, the attached resolution would update the signers for the account, which would remove David Hawker and Kurt Olson as signers and then add Ron Chandler and Debbie Memoni as new signers with keeping Scott Morgan as a signer. So, do you have any questions on that resolution?
My only question, the last line on Section One, well, Section One refers to Bank of the West and then the last sentence says, "Funds deposited at such institutions." So, I think maybe it should just be institution.
Okay.
Madam Chair, you ready for a motion on the resolution?
Well, I think we have another item on the agenda first and then we'll go there. Anybody have questions for Ms. Robertson? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. So, now the resolution. Is there a motion to approve Resolution UR 2016-01?
So, moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution UR 2016-07. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Nigel?
I'm glad you corrected. First, I think you said 2016-01, but you corrected it to 2016-07.
Seven, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, I read and it said oh-one. So, it's 2016-07.
We have a roll call, please. Anderson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Then Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And agency member comments. Are there any comments from agency members this evening about any other issues?
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could, given, we've got some time, maybe ask staff back and get an update on where we are with our projects, the land that we had on the table to RFP out for potential development? Or maybe when we'd be seeing that. I want to keep the ball. I think Mr. Price talked about the football down the field.
Yes. Are you referring to the RFP for Realtor Services?
Or, you know, I'm really interested in, I think we identified four or five projects, pieces of property to get those on the table for potential development.
Yes. And I believe that within this budget year, you all have an expectation of one of those pieces of property being sold or redeveloped. So, we are working on that. We have to get together and kind of prioritize which one has the most market potential and kind of do a little brainstorming before we bring it back to you for, for next steps.
So, if I could, is part of the strategy to just put one out at a time or, I'm just wondering if, since none of us have really been successful developers, to throw stuff out there and see what might be of interest to some developers?
As it was presented to you in, in the past, it was, the idea was to do one a year.
Yeah.
If I understand what you're asking.
Yeah. I would see taking one, but the most exciting one, rather than us limiting, and maybe that doesn't make sense, but I'm sensing that we're going to somehow limit the site out of our site pool and that limits what a developer, you know, maybe there's some eager Beaver waiting for site five or four and we only put number three out. And I'd hate to lose that guy if he has an interesting project and ready to go.
Yeah. I think some of the properties, we've had more time with them and so, we've had more concept development, whereas some of them, we've had kind of a, just a conversation, but nothing on paper. And so, I think as we move forward and we start to, to talk with the industry professionals, we'll know, is it appropriate to list two or three or four? And then have them really, using their services and expertise and contacts, to sell the properties? Or are there some that we're going to want to hold on to because it's just not very likely that they'll sell within this year? So, we have, we have more work to do, but it's on our list and we will be bringing it back.
That's what, I just want to make sure it stays on the table so we, we see something happen. Thank you.
Any other questions?
It was my impression that we would be marketing more than one with the expectation that probably only one would sell.
Okay. Is that? Yes, that was my understanding as well. We just want to make sure that we're also not competing with ourselves. If there are some that we are more interested in seeing move than others. And we only have four, so it may just be that all four get listed. But like I said, if there's one or two that have less, less concept development, we might decide that we're just not ready to, to put it out there or we might need to have more conversations about it before we list it. So, we haven't, we haven't gotten all the answers to those questions yet. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other agency member comments tonight? All right. Hearing none, meetings adjourned.